Yeah.
I see. No bothers. Listen, this is a good idea. You know, this is like, we see a QR code hanging up outside, people waiting outside. I think it'll be kids, scan it. Very smart. And they're getting results, so.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. That's jamming.
Yeah. Yeah. It's answers. Is it the guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Have some. Thanks. Thanks. Okay.
Have they had like Chan?
Yes.
Little Chan. He's like always.
That's for preschool. Full stop.
Yeah. You know what they want.
Nah. So that big one, right?
How can we always have fun? When it's like interprogram hours and all, it's like my. I'll make sure I don't. No, I'm not.
Problems, so.
Yeah. The boys.
I do what I meant by saying that. I know you appreciate your always invited to the house for these events. I love the events. I really is. Just goes to remind you of that. Camera on the wall. And there are probably some of us that we can see some of yous in the kitchen. I appreciate.
He has a comedian.
Just doing. I think that's a lot of salary. Pretty close from where you did that. They look side very busy.
Yeah. 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 No, no.
I'm really good at it.
Oh, yeah? No, everything's good.
Yeah, I look like.
I got like the pros, Jan and Julian.
Yeah, they're good.
Yeah, they're amazing. I mean, Jan is like.
Yeah, they're good.
So.
Well, the nicest I haven't delivered yet. So I said, yeah, perhaps a bit. Now, which is. Yes, yes. Yeah, not here. But she's not good.
What are you writing?
No, every year, every year, all of them is a bloodstain.
We go, we go celebrate.
Yeah. I just want to buy your grand consultant and one more. I'll tell you. I remember with the Thursday.
Well.
Why do you think we don't?
Thank you.
Don't let me forget it. Four now.
Water, I sweat. Yes, I am. Every day. Not sit once. My higher family who sit all the way.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education's special meeting and annual budget hearing this Thursday, May eighth at seven P. M. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, we are nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, B two A, order of business. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends the order of business for this meeting and this meeting only according to policy twenty-three fifty. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D one A, approval for legal defense. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the following. Whereas, in accordance with Education Law, section thirty-eight eleven, and/or Public Officers Law, section eighteen, as well as under any other applicable legal or insurance policy provisions, current employee Kevin Coyne, Brentwood U. F. S. D., has submitted a timely written request for legal indemnification, defense and indemnification regarding an action titled Rhonda Young versus Brentwood Union Free School District and Kevin Coyne, Civil Action Number Two Two Five, C. V. zero one seven eight nine J. M. W. Whereas, there are allegations in the above-mentioned legal action arising from the performance of Brentwood U. F. S. D.'s exercise of their official duties and responsibilities, and whereas Brentwood U. F. S. D. does not waive any rights that it may have to challenge any aspect of this legal action, including but not limited to improper service of the legal action, and therefore, now be resolved that the Board of Education hereby designates a law firm designated by NYSER to represent Brentwood U. F. S. D. in the above-mentioned legal action. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. So we are gonna proceed with our budget hearing.
Tonight, we have our final budget workshop, and we have the best shirts to have here. Stacy O'Connor presenting a workshop right now for budget. Does anyone present a budget?
Thank you. You would welcome, remember, I'm just actually our formal budget hearing, although we can make any changes upon the budget. This is why we presented a summary of all the meetings that we've seen and what we actually have in the budget. So I will start by sharing.
Stacy, you're hundred.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Brandon. Okay. So again, it's our formal budget hearing, which we're required to have. So we'll start off with the summary of the budget. For our twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget, it's six hundred eighty-eight million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's an increase of just over eighty-five million, and we'll talk about what's contained to that increase. It's a large increase, but we do have a large one-time increase in that, in that number. So the percentage-wise, that comes out to fourteen point one three percent, and tax levy-wise, even though that increase is so large, we're only looking at a tax increase of one percent. So the revenues supporting the budget, where do they come from? Well, seventy-five percent of that comes from state aid, and that's lower than you've seen in the past, and that's because that one-time expenditure, we're taking out of our reserves. So the other portion that you see there at eight percent is usually around one percent. So because that's higher, it's lowering the state aid percentage. Looking at that as only a one-year impact on our budget, so I would expect that to change the following year. And our tax levy star is about seventeen percent of our revenue. So if we look at the state budget, and we just got this information late last night, they finally sent us our state aid run. Up to that, we were working on our governor's budget, which we got back in January. So statewide, the increase to education is one point seven billion dollars. Of that, the district Brentwood is getting an increase of just over forty-four million. So that's, you know, a large increase for us. We're thankful that that foundation aid formula is running. They made a couple of changes this year, just small adjustments to these, to the foundation aid formula, which really helped, which helped our district, and we talked about it a little bit right after the governor's budget came out. We didn't know if it would stay in the budget, but that's, they were using poverty levels from the year two thousand all the way through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So they changed that to a poverty level. It's called S.A.P. That's calculated every year. So it actually took into account our actual poverty rather than what we looked like back in the year two thousand. So that's part of that increase that you, that we see there, why it went up that much, and other school districts, it may have gone down if their composition changed over those years. In terms of our expense-based aids, this is some things that, over the years, the governor has proposed to change to freeze aids such as our Bosse's aid or our library materials aid. There was no suggestion to change any of that this year. So if we look at the actual numbers, we can see the categories of aid that changed. By far, our largest state aid is foundation aid, so that's four hundred and forty-nine million, which is a forty-three million dollar increase. Then we see some other changes, the Bosse's aid going up three point eight million, and we had talked about that when Ms. Chang presented the I.T. budget, and that's because we had switched the laptops from, from just the supply money, paying it directly to the vendor, and we run it through Bosse's, and we also switched some software programs as well, quite a few, through Bosse's. So we still get the same software, we still get the same laptops, but if we run it through Bosse's, we have to pay a little bit more in terms of a fee, but we get that aid back way more than what we have to pay in that fee. Our high-cost, excess-cost aid, that is based on actual expenditures for our special needs students. And the other, the next three categories, or the next hardware and technology, library materials aid, based on our enrollment, which is actually going down a few students, so that's just a direct result of that. Transportation aid, the costs go up every year, so we tend to get more aid each year. And then building aid, we see going down two point nine million, which was expected because we're, we've paid off some of our older projects. It usually takes fifteen years, we get the aid on the projects. So we're gonna see in a future slide also, our debt service is going down by even more than that. So you expect that, you try to time that the best you can, so the debt service payments and the aid payments end at the same time. So it's really a net zero increase on the budget. So here are the state aid percentages within the budget and how it supported our budget. And you can see, we were up to seventy-eight point three percent for a couple of years in a row. We're down to that seventy-five percent, again, because we're taking a one-time reserve revenue and applying it to the budget, so that category goes up while our state aid goes down a little bit. If we look at our actual tax levy and the percentage that we could charge to the community, our allowable levy this year, percentage-wise, was three point six eight percent. That's based on the property tax gap formula that we go over each year. But what we're, what I said earlier on one of the first slides is, the actual tax increase that we're looking at percentage-wise is one percent. So if we look at the, the column all the way on the right, the bottom portion, that one percent is in the lighter color, and on top, that green color, is what we could have levied up to, where it says savings, but we didn't. We're not charging that to the community. And if we look at that number-wise, you could see the column on the left is what we actually levied, the column on the right is what we could have levied. So if we look at twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, we left the levy at the same amount for three years in a row, even though we could have gone up about three or four million, if I recall, each year. So that's four million, it was actually. So that's four million each year that we did not charge to the community, and we used, you know, our own funds wisely, prudently, so we didn't have to. And if you think about the growth of our district and the programs and everything we put in place those years, we did that without increasing the levy. So over tho, that span, it's, it's well over twenty million dollars that we did not charge to the community, yet we kept everything growing and moving and expanding. So if we look at dollar-wise for this current year, or twenty-five, twenty-six, next year that we're talking about here, with the one percent increase in the levy, that equates to one point one million dollars, although the allowable levy increase at that three point five six is four point two million dollars. So that's what I was talking about, that savings to the community. That's three million dollars that we're not charging to the community, and we're, you know, still making do. You're gonna see a lot of exciting stuff that we have included in this budget in a few slides. So the increase to the homeowners, unable to calculate at this time, only because we don't get information such as the adjusted base proportions and the assessment information. We don't get that from the town until usually August. But if those two things stay the same, and we use a one percent levy increase, what I can calculate is it's roughly sixty dollars annually, one year, to the, the home of the average assessed value, which is thirty-five thousand in the community. Keep in mind, that's only on your school taxes. There are other levies within your full property tax that we have no control over. There's a county levy, a town levy, library, and a fire department levy. Any questions on that? So we'll move over then into the expenditure side of the budget, and it's the same number. The revenue side of the budget has to equal the expenditure side of the budget. That's the way we build the budget, so the increase, that eighty-five million, and the percentage is exactly the same. If we look at where the budget, if I break it down by categories, how that, how the budget is growing, that eighty-five million, you know, we could look at it here. Our certificated salaries, our teachers, our administrators, our teaching assistants, that's going up twenty million dollars, and I'm gonna go into where that's going up, position-wise, program-wise. Our N.C. salaries, that's non-certified salaries, so that would be all other employees. That's going up four point six million. It's contractual increases, as well, as well as some addition in positions. When you add salaries, the benefits always follow along, as well as health benefits and things like that. Bosse's, we see a very large increase there. About twenty million, just, just a hair shy of twenty million of that alone is in our special services area. The rest is that shift that I mentioned earlier, between the laptops, between the budget, and then between Bosse's. We did it this year, but we did it through a budget transfer. We didn't budget in that, in that way, to pay through Bosse's for the laptops. So now you're seeing that hit our budget, because if you go a couple lines down, our supplies and equipment is actually going down. So we pulled money out of there, and we put it into Bosse's. And then the, the biggest change here is our interfund transfer, and that's that one-time, it's gonna be thirty mil, thirty-nine million dollars of that, is a one-time expenditure, and that's to put air conditioning in buildings, but we'll look at that in, in just a minute as we go through our expenditures. So if we look at our staff additions, that's that certified salary column I was just talking about, in our teaching positions, and this is just a recap of what you've already heard at our budget meetings over the past three months. Ms. Young, Mr. Gangler, Ms. Palmer, they all presented this within their presentations. So special services, Ms. Young talked about psychologists, social workers, a number of speech teachers, classroom teachers, A.B.A.s, which are the behavior specialists within some of our schools, and also a special education dean. We're looking at restorative justice coaches, interventionists, to support all students, because all students can learn, they might just need a little extra help, and that's what we're gonna target on, on our children, along with that high-dose tutoring. And at the elementary level, we have art, music, physical education, we have library-media specialists, I believe that's at elementary and middle schools. And then we're looking at, at some, a little more support in our guidance, because we do far more, or our guidance does far more than just write letters of recommendation, make schedules. We really help the whole child, and, you know, little, we're adding a little more support in that area. In our non-certified salaries, we're looking at a transportation position, we're looking at some I.T. positions, a number of technicians and cybersecurity technicians, maintenance mechanics to help with some of our presentations, custodial positions as well, as well as clerical positions. So when we were looking at the budget, and we talked, we talk a lot about here, we talk to the community, we see what's going on, we have the administrators present, we thought this year we would kinda take it to the schools, so to speak, and see what our children would do with the money if, if we asked them what should be in the budget.
I think she should spend the money by buying a room that's full of king-size beds, so that way, when the students are like tired, they can just go to sleep. Playroom. So we could play with cards and build legos and play with dolls.
I would spend it on like VR headsets, so that we could like make it, we could like put on, you know Word, right? We can like put it on the VR, and then we can probably just like write in there.
I feel like it would keep the kids like engaged and more interested and such.
I would spend it by buying everybody a Mac, a MacBook. So, so they can do more things, and, and plus, they can also learn more things, like how to create things, like games or certain apps, and that will help them with digital, and also it could show them not to online Billy.
Hmm, potato chip. Do I need more? I think chicken drum.
Yeah.
Pizza, con pepperoni, and, and chocolate, and pollo.
Hmm, qué rico.
Un toad eye de agua y una piscina.
Eso suena muy divertido. Te encantaría estar en la piscina?
Sí.
Oh, qué bueno.
Can we buy the school a pool?
Yes.
Wow, that is so awesome.
And the water slide.
And a water slide? That's excellent. High five, Oscar. Yay.
Chocolate and cookies.
Cookies and what?
Chocolate muffins.
And chocolate muffins. That sounds so yummy.
And money. Actually, to, chocolate money.
Chocolate money. That sounds delicious.
Chocolate coin.
And chocolate coin.
I like chocolate coins.
And lollipops, and apples, green apples and red apples.
Okay, lollipops and red apples and green apples. Okay, and Adia, I have a question for you.
Okay.
And strawberries.
Oh, and strawberries, and pink strawberries, too.
I'm trying to think. Some toys?
It's summer toys.
It's Sonic's toy.
Yeah, so.
Sonic and Peppa Pig is my favorite.
Dolls.
And dolls for our girls. I'll probably start a club called Hyper Kids, we're like looking at the end, because like usually, like I have a lot of friends, like me, like who are like really hyper, and like, you know, we can't really like, like act out how we usually like want to, because like sometimes, like, you know, we wanna do fun activities, we wanna do this stuff, but usually we're called like too hyper, like too this. So I like to have like program, like where like, you know, we can express that, you know, have fun, like have fun classes, and like have like fun activities, like we can do our homework, but like have it done in a fun way, so it's not like, like, oh, sit down at the desk, do your homework, this and that. I'll probably plan a, a full trip for like some of the grades, so where we can like explore out of Long Island, and like go to like Pennsylvania or somewhere to like just explore new environment, because like when we're out of, like when we're out of high school, when we're going to colleges, we're gonna like, we're gonna have to like adapt to a new environment, because like we're not, like some kids may wanna stay here, but some kids may wanna go out of state. So I was thinking like maybe we go like around and like, like just enjoy like new places, like take notes about it, or just like, you know, enjoy new environment.
I would, I would plan a video game competition, because some, some of the, some of the students here are gamers probably, and, and I would want them to, to, to make, to make them play in a competition, like, like when they're ever playing Smash Bros., I, I would let them play Smash Bros. I would start a video game club, because, because I might, because I would tell them the objective is to beat a game, so, so that, so that if they complete it, I, I can give them a break.
Great job.
Just a very, very special thank you to Aaron Marsh and Kimberly Savage for helping me with that. They really knocked it out of the park, I think, and without them, I couldn't have done it, so thank you. So some of the, by the way, great ideas, some of that we have. We can tell the little guy, we have a pool, there's no water slide, but we have a pool, VR headsets. After some late-night meetings, those king-size beds could, could really help for the next morning. But yeah. So to move on and talk about the instructional additions that we do have, Graduation Plus, we've heard, we hear about it most of our meetings, and we are happy to say we're expanding that. We're gonna join a local partnership with, with Local Two, Local Sixty-Six, and they're gonna teach our kids construction skills. Any exposure we can get the kids, you know, to this type of work, you know, they never know what they're good at or what they wanna do, and not everybody's gonna go to college, and training like this can have them graduate and immediately have a high-paying job. So we're looking forward to that. We're enhancing some of our civic readiness opportunities, expanding MBK, as well as Girls Inc., Girls United, and Youth in Government. We always look for different alternative graduation pathways. There are so many opportunities for our children to get that diploma, and we try to help them in any way we can to get them to a place to graduate with that extra skill. We have adoptions of both reading and math programs. We're expanding music at the middle schools. We started sixth-grade music as an after-school activity this year. We're gonna expand that to include it within the school day, so everybody gets to pick an instrument earlier, and that'll only enhance our program moving forward as they make their way through the high school. And we plan to add American Sign Language within our freshman campus. Some of the enhanced security upgrades that we're adding, and we've been doing this for a bit now, we've changed out hundreds of cameras, we have hundreds more to go, we're a large district, so it does take time. We have the vape detectors that we've changed, we've added in bathrooms, and we're still making adjustments there. What we're doing right now is a playground monitoring system, so we have a pilot program at one of our elementaries, where we have cameras and motion detectors right on our playground, so if somebody's there after hours, we'll know it immediately, it'll pop up in the security area, we'll be able to talk to them through speakers that we have there, so we'll keep our playground safe. We've invested so much. Every elementary school has at least one brand-new playground, as well as our middle schools have the ninja courses, so we've done so much, and we're gonna protect our investments. We're also still working on door monitoring systems. We have that complete in many buildings, but you heard N. S. McRae say at his presentation that we're still working on that, to get it all done everywhere. Some of the other improvements we have, where in the I.T. area, we're enhancing cybersecurity, some of those technicians that I talked about, the positions we're adding are gonna be directly related to cybersecurity. We're also checking all of our heat maps for Wi-Fi, that tells us where we have weak and strong signals in the building, so we'll be adding upgrades to our Wi-Fi system where we see that's necessary. We've wired some buildings, at least one, one and a half, I'd say, with the Cat Six networking cable to increase the speed on our wired networks. We're making a lot of improvements there. We have library renovations coming over the summer, and that's at Weston East Middle School. This is actually a picture of North Middle School, which we renovated last year, so the other two will be similar to this. Some of the camps and other upgrades, we're upgrading our radio station, and we're gonna add podcasting. We'll get all new equipment there and, and give a little facelift to the radio station, but add new classes there, again, to expose the kids to, to more opportunities. Podcasting is, is definitely a growing area. We're gonna have sports clinics and camps, and that'll include baseball, volleyball, basketball, and we heard our own superintendent say she needs twirling lessons, so she will be an expert twirler at the end of the summer. And this is the one-time expenditure I mentioned earlier, the capital improvement. It's thirty-five million, thirty-nine million dollars, excuse me, and that's right in our budget, so that's in a transfer to capital line within our budget, so if our budget is successful, this is successful as well. And that, we know that the, the state, you know, passed an excessive heat regulation recently, so it's something we're gonna have to react to. recently, so it's something we're gonna have to react to and that's if classrooms reach a certain temperature, we have to relocate students or come up with a plan on how we're gonna handle the students in those scenarios. So what we're looking to do is add air conditioning to all large areas. That includes the gyms, cafeterias, and libraries in all of the school buildings. It's not gonna happen overnight, it's not gonna happen this summer. It'll be a multi-year project, but if we get approval now, by next summer, we can do some of the buildings. I would think it would be a three-year um project, so summers twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Also contained in that thirty-nine million is to renovate the West Middle School and East Middle School auditoriums. We recently did North, uh North Middle last year. South Middle was done a number of years ago, but it's, it's in good shape, but these two auditoriums could really use a, a complete renovation. So that's the thirty-nine million, it's coming out of our, out of our reserve funds. And again, this is getting done with a tax rate increase of one percent. So some of the improvements, and I love this picture, these are from prior years. Like I said, it's a multi-year um project that we would do with the air conditioning. This is some things you approved years ago and it's finally coming to fruition. So this is our field right outside of the administration building, connected really to um to Ross. So our soccer field, if you can see my mouse, is over here, the new soccer field. So this is gonna be what, how we're gonna connect to the football um field. So this is right in the middle, you have the culinary building that we're built, that we're gonna start this summer. So with the bottom, we have a full commercial kitchen where we're gonna start that CTE culinary program and on the upstairs, we have classroom space. It'll have concession stand in there, it'll have bathrooms in there, and just a lovely pavilion area um for our spectators. And then we'll start this football field in the fall after football season. Some other improvements that we're gonna do this summer from prior year's funds are cafeteria improvements. We did um South and East Middle Schools in the cafeteria last summer, we're gonna do West and North this summer. We're also gonna do Laurel, Loretta, and Southwest Elementary. The pictures are renderings of how our elementary schools will look. The furniture is just, you know, different ways we can set it up, um so that, but if you look at the actual structure, the ceiling will have those lighting patterns in the walls and stuff, so. And if you saw Ross and the middle schools that we did last summer, they just came out beautifully. High school and middle school science rooms, we did some last year, we're gonna do some this summer. Elementary classroom sinks, we did in Oak Park last summer, we're gonna do in, I believe, five buildings this summer. We have a playground going in at Oak Park this summer, or we might start that actually before the summer. We have many bathroom renovations going on throughout the district. Even in this building, we had it done, if you visited the bathrooms here, uh around this room, you can see they came out really nice and, and we have, we did about fifty-five bathrooms last year, or this current year, I guess, um and we still have so many more to do, but it's, you know, they, they needed the work. They were probably original bathrooms and we're really trying to build towards the future. And then the ceiling tile replacement, we're gonna do in numerous buildings. When you look up at some of our ceilings and you see those one-by-one tiles that you can't get anymore, they're falling down. And it's just such an old look, so we're, and we do the lighting when we do that as well, so it really helps the, the classroom environment and the hallways, it just brightens everything up. Our Smart Schools Bond, you haven't heard about that in a while, but years ago you did hear about that. We finally have Department of Health approval on most of the locations, not all, um to replace the portables. We had to upgrade all septic systems, there was a lot we had to do to get it to a place where we could start this, uh, start the work and get the Department of Health approval, but we're there now. Air conditioning in the freshman campus cafeteria, that's something we approved um a year ago, so we could move forward with that this summer. Hemlock, we're looking to expand the parking lot this summer and we can add twenty-two spots um alongside of the building. We have warehouses that we're gonna start building uh this, this summer, that's behind Sonderling and also right next to our, our athletic warehouse by Loretta Park. We have security vestibules going in this summer at East Kindergarten, Laurel, and Southwest. We have a roof-and-window Marge project being done, the high school, that's sixteen-hundred wing, so that's our ROTC and the radio station, um that, and the art rooms in that hallway. So that's all the exciting stuff we have going on and that really just scratches the surface. It's really gonna be a busy summer, it's a short summer with Labor Day coming so early, but that's what we have in store. So now, one of the things at the hearing, um I have to talk to you about is what happens if the budget does not pass? If that's the case, the board has three options. They can do a, a second budget vote, that's always on the third Tuesday in June, and they could propose the same budget, same budget amount and the same levy for a revote. They can propose a revised budget and/or levy, so either one can change for the revote in June, or they can just choose not to have a revote and adopt a contingent budget. If we, if the second budget vote fails, we have to go to a contingent budget. So if we do go to that contingent budget, one of the rules is that the current year's levy may not be increased, so that one percent increase, we're not allowed to do. Some of the other restrictions include that we must eliminate most of the equipment within the budget. There is still some we're allowed to purchase, but most would have to be eliminated. We have no choice but to eliminate the capital projects, that thirty-nine million for the air conditioning, that would have to go, we wouldn't be able to move forward with that. We must charge for use of facilities at all times, any costs that we incur, and then there are restrictions on purchases of su- su- school supplies, excuse me. We're pretty generous with the supplies we um purchase for our children, so we, we'd only be allowed to purchase some of those supplies, not all that we, we do purchase. So that's um, that's what would happen under a contingent budget. Just remind you of the vote date, that's Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty-five, at your local elementary school. If you don't know where to vote, you could look on the district website in the district clerk's area, you can call the district clerk, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to help you with that, so. Thank you, any questions from the board? Thank you, Stacy.
She's walking, I'm sorry.
Hi, hold on a second, we'll get to you right away. Any questions from the board?
Just wanna say thank you, Stacy, that was very thorough. Thank you.
Just wanna add one more thing, Julie, we do want to say thank you, you know, I loved what you added there with the student voice and, and I know that, I saw Eileen taking notes, everybody taking notes, I'm sure that we're going to bring many of the items that, besides the arroz con pollo and all of that, you know, we have that already.
Yes, we have.
Right, that we're going to bring that here, but it takes countless hours for you to prepare this and I want everyone to know that it starts in November, this process. And many meetings with the cabinet, with the Board of Education, and in order to be able to do all the great things that we have done here, this is not just about putting numbers together, so you have handled the district budget and I feel it with care, with integrity, and um, and I really want to acknowledge the work that you have done, because if it wasn't the way that you have handled our money, the district money, we have not, we could not have been able to do all the things that we have done and what we want to do. And I also want to thank you for this, you know, from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure that you feel the same way, and also Phil Ramos called me yesterday to let us know about the forty-four million dollars. If he's listening, I just wanna say thank you for always advocating for the Brentwood community, just wanted to say that. So thank you.
One other thing we heard from Assemblyman Ramos, Deputy Speaker Ramos yesterday, and also um legislator Sanon, is that they're giving us a grant for the freshman campus to install safety locks on classrooms, so now you'll be able to swipe into classrooms. So that was a great thing we heard yesterday as well.
Yes, yes, and there's also some talk about bringing that into the high schools.
Yes.
So we're just working on that and seeing where the legislature will land on the amount of funds they will uh give to Brentwood to help us with that initiative as well. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Uh, yeah, uh, I always can't wait for Stacy to give her presentation for the last couple of years, so thank you, it was tons of fun this time. You know, so you're definitely stepping it up with the video. I think they did all the work for you for next year, so, uh, you know, I, I know we can't have candy during the school day, but we could find other ways, you know? I, I always sneak candy into the movies, you know? But yeah, thank you, really, uh, for, for all this. You make uh very, very large numbers, not so scary, uh, you always have a plan, uh, and it brings a lot of comfort when trying to make these hard decisions together, so, you know, and as a community, it's very thorough and, and I appreciate that. Helps, it helps make it a lot easier to explain to people.
Thank you.
Stacy, just one more comment. I, you know, people always wonder where the money goes, right? And, and what do we do with the money? So I think this was such a great presentation for really showcasing what we do with the money. And I just wanna thank you for that. And I think the thirty-nine million for air conditioning is just like astounding, that we're able to do that within our budget and the reserves that we have, so that, um, really, I, I wanna echo one of these words, that thank you for managing the money. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're looking, I think we're all looking forward to all of the changes that are going to come for fruition, so many years of planning, waiting, um being persistent, being diligent in our efforts to give our students the very best, um hopefully making our parents happy with the decisions that we're making um in our community, you know? I always say if we put the students first, they're never gonna make a bad decision, and I think that holds true. And so with that, I'll move forward with uh community member Michelle Madrano, um she was, her question was, was more of a statement, but I, I guess it's prefaced by a question. Hire more elementary teachers. My daughter is in second grade, has twenty-six kids to one teacher in general ed. We all feel this is too many children for one teacher to handle, no matter how trained they are.
So we are actually, we were very happy to hear yesterday that the budget increased. Ms. Valmer, at the elementary level, she has a formula that she uses to um, that she uses to ensure that the classes are low. We'll never have the classes at cap unless we have an increase in enrollment. So right now, for example, we actually, we're speaking today about a class in um at Northeast, where we still have room for more students. We'll continue to add classes if needed, um but the numbers are never really at cap. It's always one or two less. Unless we have a bilingual increase, it happens in bilingual classrooms, sometimes we have an influence, you know, influence of students.
What's cap for one teacher?
It all depends on the grade level.
Elementary?
So we have uh the kinder level, twenty-five, first grade is twenty-six, second grade is twenty-seven or twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Third grade is twenty-nine.
Third grade is twenty, twenty, twenty-seven.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, and also thirty in fourth and fifth grade. Yes.
We also have a teacher, teacher assistants that are in classrooms with teachers during reading blocks and math blocks.
This is in general education, so that's...
In general ed.
She wants to come to the mic.
You can come to the mic.
Just a reminder, the public comments, limited to three minutes per person with no sharing of time, and the clock started at seven forty-two on public comment. This is the budget hearing, it's not a business meeting, so commentary is limited to items pertaining to the school budget as presented by Ms. O'Connor.
So my daughter is one out of twenty-six in general ed and her teacher is by herself majority of the time. I think she does maybe have someone, you know, for a reading block or a math block, my, mainly she's by herself. And my daughter is to the point where she does not like school anymore. She does not like going, it's been overwhelmed, the class has been overwhelmed by children who obviously may need more attention than others and it's a little bit hard for the teacher to handle. And it's just come to the point where I don't know who to turn to. And you know, I don't want my daughter to be in third grade with, you know, tw- another twenty-six kids for one teacher, um because then yes, we would reconsider and going to private school, um because it's just too much. And I, she's loved her classes so far, kindergarten, first grade here, and then second grade came and, you know, I am very um involved. And um hearing her say that she doesn't like going to school now is just, you know, it's really crushing, um because I do want her to love going to her class and always enjoying the moments, um but it's just something we have to reconsider, like, for her third grade, you know, if there is, again, twenty-six, twenty-seven kids in her classroom. Thank you.
Good enough going to work on that.
Ma'am, just say your name for the record, please.
Michelle Madrano.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss, I guess your question is regarding the salary of teachers.
There was a lady before me.
Kim, Ms. Johnson? Do you want to come to the mic with your question?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Yeah, because I wanna be sure that we're answering it accurately? And just as a reminder, the questions are budget, regarding the budget only.
Yeah, we have the toilet compense and...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Sorry, I took a picture, just to make sure. All right, so in since twenty-tw...
Say your name again for the record.
Kim Johnson.
Thank you.
So since twenty-twenty-five, there seems to be a change on how things are handled for workplace environment issues. I did revise the question a little bit. I wanted to understand what the cost is for the legal factors that's in our budget for legal defense. Is there any type of significant additional course when we do have to go against any type of legal issue that occurs? And also, um, why were there any change in practices since twenty-fifteen for any type of allegations that do occur?
I cannot, yeah, I cannot provide you an accurate number, but if you would just bear with me, I will have the district clerk get you that information.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, I don't wanna give you misinformation, I don't wanna do that, so I wanna make sure your question is answered accurately and we'll make sure you get that.
Okay, and then I did have one other question. So we do have a policy, it's sixty-one hundred um for the annual policy. There's three categories for the budget if we do go through a contingency budget. Is there a reason why we're not putting caps on salaries and actually taking services away from students instead?
There are a couple salaries that we would have to cap based on legislation, but it's any, it's um people like outside of a union, so it's only um a few people that, that we would have to cap.
But based on what you presented, it didn't show that?
No, it didn't, but that is one of the...
So that's not the contingency budget that you planned to present if it did not go through?
I'd have no choice but to do that.
Okay, so there are three components, so I don't know if you all are aware, I'm assuming you are, because you're board members, so one thing that we wanna make sure we don't do for the community is make sure we don't take services away from students and that's a big component. Salaries take up over seventy-five percent of our budget, so we wanna make sure that we're utilizing our resources appropriately. We have over almost a billion-dollar budget, so we wanna make sure we're using that appropriately, just for your own wealth of knowledge.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
A lot of that is also um regulated by the state as to what we can and cannot, you know, kind of put forth in a contingency budget, so there's limitations on that.
But it's written right there.
But that's part of it.
Mr. Moss.
William Moss, I am a resident. My question is about Kevin Coyne and his salary. I do wanna know his exact salary that is in this budget for next year.
I'm not going to be able to provide that information to you at this moment. I will confer with council and the district clerk and we will get that information if it's applicable and if it's legally um available to us to provide to you.
It's legally available for you to provide because it's a salary. All salaries are public information, so this is a public meeting, it's a public hearing for the budget. This is the most popular teacher in the district, I'm sure. One of you must know the salary of the president of the Brentwood Teachers Association, especially since it is over probably two-hundred thousand dollars a year. The see-through New York shows the salary in twenty-twenty-four was two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand. Somebody here better know the salary for this coming school year. Does nobody know? I'm here, I'm asking you, does anybody know? And that, that's a real... And that, that's a real question.
We do know the salary. I don't have it here with me. I don't, I don't have it.
Do you have a roundabout figure?
I don't have it with me.
I'm not going to, none of us are going to speculate. We want a concrete number. We are more than happy to provide that to you, but in order to do so, we will need to make sure we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and we're not providing you with incorrect numbers. So please allow us the opportunity to give you the information you seek, but in a correct manner.
Does anybody know why the information was deleted or scrubbed off of See Through New York? Does anybody here, did anybody contact See Through New York and scrub John Callen's and Mr. Coyne's information off of that?
Can I just say, I'm not comfortable speaking about a specific staff.
You should be because it's public information.
It is public information and you were able to get that. So I don't know that.
Yeah. So you should be able to speak about a salary. That is not something that is secret. It is not something that is private. You should be able to tell me the breakdown and the backup for how someone is making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in this district and you should know.
You already got your answers. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Are you not going to answer? No, so no one here knows the number?
Again, we're going to give you that number. You can communicate with the district clerk when we have.
Since you're not going to answer, I'll move on. My next question is about John Callen. He is someone who is making over two hundred thousand dollars a year. I would like to know, uh, do we have an assignment that is assigned to this individual who is working from home? Has he had assignments for two and a half years? And if he is going to be factored into this next budget, I would like to know what the plan is for his salary for this coming school year.
Some of us, you know that I cannot discuss any personnel matters. Yes, I can't.
You can discuss an assignment that is also public information. Listen, we don't have to, you can't hide behind employee matters when something is foillable. You don't have that right and now you're hiding it and that's what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, Ms. Anna Flores, would you like me to read it or are you okay with, with you there?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I'll read her question. Will the minutes including the slides from tonight be available on the district website before May tenth? No? Sorry? It's two days from now? Okay. So no, they will not be available by May tenth? Okay. Sorry, Anna, no, they will not be.
They will be available.
They will?
Video.
Okay. The video will be available.
Well, that, that includes the slides.
Yeah. The video will be available, but it won't be available on the web. Right? Minutes will not be available. Okay. Thank you.
She's referring to this.
The slides.
This will be available, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Elvia Salinas.
My name is Elvia Salinas Caio. That was a beautiful presentation. Um, my question is, how much of the district's money is being allocated for Kevin Coyne's legal fees?
Um, that's an unknown at this time.
It's unknown?
It's unknown at.
Is there a roundabout figure? Is there a cap on that?
Couldn't, couldn't really answer that.
Okay. And does the community, um, the residents, um, do we have any say in that? Or is that something that just the board decides?
The board doesn't make the decision. We employ counsel and he's indemnified by the district and as part of the lawsuit, there's legal fees that will be accrued, but we can't tell you that because it's unknown right now. We don't.
Right.